This conference will now be recorded.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning, everyone.
We're about to begin our meeting. We have an about tears in the press.
Then we follow, we just want to thank you for today. Thank God for blessing that you'll be stowed upon us. And Father God, we just ask a little bit you would bless this meeting this morning. Father God, to continue to bless the citizens in this county. And Father God, bless the commissioners, the orders, the decisions come upon them. Father God, I just thank you, Lord, that you give me wisdom, knowledge, and understanding, Lord, to continue to do the service of this county. And Father, we just want to thank you. And Lord, we appreciate you for everything that you do. In these, Lord, who blessed me, ask me your son, Jesus' name.
Amen. This outstanding enjoyment in the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You made it seated. Yeah, before you a proposed agenda, what's the pledge of the board?
We got any additions?
Uh, yes, sir, uh, Steve. Uh, yeah, Steve. Uh, like they had number thirteen, it's just information about the upcoming planning commission meeting, what they're, what they're considering. We'd have an executive session for personnel matter. And then got an item on behalf of the county extension service.
Dave?
Yeah?
I was trying to look to see what Bert was looking at. That's what I see over there, over the street.
Wait, wait a second. I can't see that.
Commission of team, uh, of team.
I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to most way through the agenda with the additions.
Okay, here's the motion and second. All in favor by the show of hand. That motion carries. Our old minute will mail an email to everybody. What's the pledge of the board? There's the motion and second. Do we have any discussion or correction before we vote on? If not, all in favor by the show of hand. That motion carries. Mr. Steve, it's on you.
Yeah. Personally say, to the folks out in the audience, I'm sorry, but the two big screens out there, we having technical issues this morning, so those screens aren't working, so.
They were.
That one's working, is that one working? Oh, that one finally started working. I couldn't get any one to work earlier, so at least y'all got one out too, then.
It's only half as bad as you thought it was.
Yeah, it ain't near as bad as I thought it was. Okay, uh, item number two, we'll have the financial report for the month of August at the next meeting. Uh, just reminding you, it's that time of year where cash flow is getting tight. But we're, we're, we're still paying our bills on time, so. Item number two, nothing new to report on the budget. Uh, we can skip, skip to item number, why are we talking about that? Get to the right spot here. Okay, we skipped item number ten, it's related to the budget. We have tentatively adopted a millage rate that according to the state requires an increase in property taxes of 2.62%. We're proposing to leave the millage rate, the same millage rate as last year, seventeen point four five meals. But. Yes. So we're leaving the millage rate the same as last year, but that's going to result in just a little bit additional property tax revenue. The state requiring us to hold three public hearings on the proposed tax increase. Uh, we'll hold one at ten o'clock this morning. We'll hold one at six P.M. tonight. And then we're going to hold the next one on Friday, September the nineteenth. Ordinarily, our second meeting in September would be on the third Thursday, which would be September the eighteenth. But the Board of Education's having to go through the same process. And they don't, they have their third public hearing scheduled for the, the evening of Thursday, September the eighteenth. So we wouldn't be able to officially adopt the millage rate until after they've gone through their process. And I took the liberty of saying, and y'all, y'all already told me that y'all would be willing to reschedule our second meeting in September from that Thursday to that Friday, so we can hold our third public hearing on the proposed tax increase, hold the public hearing on the millage rate, and then officially levy the two thousand and twenty-five millage rate for the Board of Education that they're going to request, and the county's millage rate. So we'll be through, and we can adopt our budget officially at that meeting also. So everything will be done then, so. But I hope, I tell you what, if you don't mind, I will take the liberty of skipping to item number seven on the agenda. Paula, be ready if you want us to come up and have a seat here. This is Paul Smith, he's our representative with A C C G Retirement Services. And mainly, he's here to, to go over a new option that we can make available to our employees of Roth IRA. So I'll let you, you know a lot more about that than I do, so I'll let you take it from there.
Alrighty, thank you, good morning. Glad to be here, representing A C C G Retirement Services. We represent you all and, and about a hundred and fifty other jurisdictions in Georgia. Now, I don't handle all one fifty. I'm not Superman. There are seven more of me, or just like me, clones of me, I guess, throughout the state. But I do manage Dooley County and several counties, Turner Counties, four fifty-seven and defined benefit plan. But what we're here for today is a proposed resolution to adopt and amend your current four fifty-seven plan. Well, what is a four fifty-seven plan? It gives the employee the opportunity to defer a certain amount of their salary in a retirement option for use at a future date. You have many participants in the four fifty-seven plan currently who use the pre-tax option. So what's the difference in pre-tax and Roth? Basically, the pre-tax option is a tax break today. In other words, if they make a hundred dollars a week and they defer ten dollars of their salary, their taxable income would be ninety dollars. Well, what's different with the Roth? Well, the Roth, you make a hundred dollars, you put ten dollars in, the Roth four fifty-seven option, you pay taxes on a hundred dollars, but you can grow that in an investment option forever and ever, tax-free. The pre-tax option, if you take that option, which is currently the only available option, you pay taxes later. In other words, you get a tax break today, but you pay taxes later when you're eligible to draw it in retirement. The Roth option, basically what you've done is you've settled your taxes forever in the Roth option. Because you pay up today, you let it grow tax-free, and when you go to take it. So as a general rule, the younger you are, the better the Roth option is. Unless you have some other kind of circumstances, or you're trying to create legacy for a family member or something, you can pass that benefit on to a family member. If you pass it on in a pre-tax setting, they will be taxed. So that's kind of the, the difference in the two. And if you have any questions for me, I'll be glad to answer that.
And this would just be giving our employees an additional option for his investing in the four fifty, in the deferred comp plan?
Right.
It's not going to cost the county anything.
It gives flexibility to your existing plan, that the employee has the choice. It's only a choice, there's no additional cost, no additional admin. It's already on the form when they sign up, and I help them sign up for this option. I can just tell some of them. And I've had some express interest from employees for this option.
I have a couple of employees approach me.
Right.
Requesting that the county do this. And as far as our payroll process, processing procedure, not going to change that anyway, what shape, form, or fashion?
No, sir. There, the only option is, is when we sign them up on the form, and our record keepers enter them in the system, there's one box that says pre-tax and one box that says Roth. It's already really sitting out there. It's just not an option they can choose currently.
Is this plan managed by Nationwide?
No, sir. It's managed by A C C G.
Right, but then the money is invested in.
There's twenty-eight, the Board of Trustees, who are over the deferred compensation plan, has an alignment. They're vested, vetted, everything, day one, so to speak, in these twenty-eight investment options. You can use U.S. Treasury, you can use the target date fund, you can use a target allocation fund, or an index fund, like S and P five hundred.
The employee gets to choose that based off their risk tolerance?
Yes, sir. One hundred percent, their option, their choice, and they can change it. You know, they can change it along the way, they can contact the clerk or myself, uh, and change their options, so to speak.
You gave an example of ten percent, but they can do more.
Yes, sir. If you're under fifty, you can do twenty-three thousand five hundred. That's IRS regulation, not our regulation, but we have to follow certain guidelines in our plan that's approved, in this IRS-approved plan. And so we do all those things and manage all those things. And if you're over fifty, like I am, if you can tell by the silver tsunami up here, you can do thirty-one thousand dollars a year.
And any money that the employees have deducted from their payroll to go into the deferred comp plan, whether it's the current plan or the Roth IRA plan, then say, it's not a rainy weather savings account, it's a retirement investment that the IRS determine. I, yes, I can get it out for emergency situations, but I have to meet the IRS requirements, it's not anything. A C C G don't have any requirements, and the county don't put any requirements, whatever the IRS stipulations are.
Our plan that we manage for Dooley County or any other county is an IRS-approved plan. It's been vetted by the IRS, the rules. We just have to make sure, when we're submitting paperwork, the clerk or myself, we have to make sure that it meets those stipulations. If it does not, the IRS kicks it back. It is a retirement plan, it's not a ATM card, so to speak, which you can go down and get money.
I think that the point is well taken from Mr. Sanders, that when an employee parts with their money through their pay stub, they have an expectation that the county is doing something. And that is very, needs to be very clear right here, that once they do that, they're, they're entering into a program with A C C G that's going to manage their money in partnership with them. The county has no responsibility for the management of that money. And if they want to borrow against that money, then they have to go against, they have to use the plan to do that. And the plan follows IRS guidelines, which includes certain exceptions, but also has payback provisions and penalties if you don't do that. It's no different than if you go out and, and get your own IRA on the, on, with a, with an investment firm, right?
That, they're, they call it hardship provisions.
Right, but what, what the county's role in this is making it available to the employee, just like what we've already made available in the current four fifty-seven plan, that is, that is non-Roth. And the reason it wasn't added in at the beginning is Roth wasn't an option when we first did this.
It's become an option as of late, and it's available for adoption.
Right. And the reason I ask about Nationwide, I'm familiar with that, with the city of Leesburg. And the city of Leesburg has a plan with Nationwide and, um, through, and, and, and we adopted the Roth option a year or two ago. And we've had some people, you know, that are, that are real more toward the retirement end of things, have really benefited from that. That's all I can say.
I would recommend the county adopting, it's just a simple matter of adopting this resolution, get the chairman to sign it, and you'll take care of everything else, correct?
If this, that's right, if this Woodson will give me this information, I get it submitted to the record keepers and get it up to A C C G, and we administer it from there based on that.
How did you see the, the Roth?
R O T H.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to adopt, to give the employees the option of Roth IRA. That's it. There's been a motion and second. Do we have any other discussion? And you'll be available to explain this to any employee that has any questions?
Yes, sir. On a regular scheduled basis, I come up to Dooley County and meet with and make myself available. And I'm available by email, I'm available by phone, I think Ms. Woodson will tell you. I'm responsive to, to who, whomever, and whatever she needs. And I am the regional plan manager for Dooley County.
Do we have any other discussion? If not, all in favor by the show of hand. That motion carries.
Do y'all have any other questions for Paul about any of the retirement plans? Did we hear him? While he's here, he's, he's. Well, here, none follow, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you, sir. Guess I'm on my way to Lounts County now. Down seventy-five, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Then the question becomes Vikings, Vikings are wild cats. Be careful how you answer that. My daddy was referee, and I've been Vikings, Wildcat, gang, shit out there, they get a little heated.
Okay, let's go back, get back to the right spot here. Okay, item number four on the agenda, the bridge on Bowlin Road at Sandy Mount Creek. We're still waiting to hear back from D O T, because they had requested a letter of support from the county to support this project, and had requested a, the county provided local match and local funding of fifty thousand dollars. Mr. Kason has talked to D O T rep, and they are supposedly considering waiving that fifty thousand dollar requirement. I don't think it would be in our best interest to give them a little time to consider that, so. Item number five, just reminder, the F Y twenty twenty-six L M I funding from D O T is now available. We're eligible for eight hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. It requires a ten percent match, so that means we gotta, if we want to maximize, get all of eight hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars from D O T, we'll need to come up with eighty-three thousand dollars ourselves. And I've already talked to Rodney, and he and engineer Lance Woods are working on a list of projects for y'all's consideration to be submitted. Uh, need, application must be received by D O T by February one of next year, but would love to have it in earlier than that, so. Let's get through the budget process, and then we'll get, get on that. I, the next item, number six. All right, we got a proposed ordinance regulating cryptocurrency mining facilities, and you should have a copy there. This is, we're getting, we're getting close to, when I go, two representatives from the company that purchased the old Roseburg site came last week and visited with Glenn, and wanted to go ahead and apply for a permit at that time. Uh, he informed that we currently have a moratorium on permits for that type of facility to give us time to adopt this ordinance. They understood, they were, that wasn't a big problem for them. So our current moratorium expires October the fifteenth. If you'll look, oh, go back here. If you'll look at the last back, the last page of that, supposedly, I would like, tentatively would like for y'all to tentatively sign off on the draft version of it, this ordinance. The planning commission's going to review it next Monday at their meeting and sign off on it, because we, then we, see, then we'll publish, the planning commission needs to hold a public hearing on it, give the public time to comment on it. Then the planning commission has to have their public hearing, they'll make a recommendation to the county commissioners. The county commissioners will need to hold a public hearing on it. There again, they'll allow public time to comment on it. So at the earliest, if y'all sign, if y'all tentatively sign off, you're not officially signing off, but you're just tentatively signing off. And if the planning commission tentatively signs off next Monday evening, then the board of commissioners can hold their public hearing on a second meeting in October, which is October the sixteenth. And if there's no big outcry, and everybody's still okay with order, then y'all can officially adopt that ordinance that day. So this is pretty much the way we have talked about it. We did, and the only change, one change from the initial version, the initial version that was the model we got from some other county, you know, they, they said the noise level cannot exceed fifty decibels. Well, we've increased that to sixty-five decibels. Sixty-five decibels is what Monroe County has in their ordinance that they had adopted back in December. So, and that's. Yeah, that noise level is, is to be measured according to this ordinance. Oh, it'd be measured at the nearest or any occupied residential building. So he's not saying it's got to be that, that noise level at the property line of the facility. It's at, at a residential unit. We'll make point that out to y'all.
Also, that sixty-five reduces to sixty during the nighttime hours.
During nighttime. And there again, that, that came out of the Monroe County ordinance. And in here, prior to them getting their certificate of completion from the zoning administrator, they have to provide a report from a qualified sound engineer that their facility does not exceed this requirement. And then six months after the issuance of the certificate, the county has the option to require them to provide another report from a sound engineer, just certifying that they still do not exceed that, that. And that basically, I think that's the, the real nuts and bolts of it. Any questions, any issues with it? Can we proceed on with this draft version? Planning commission, get their feedback.
Was the two representatives shown this draft?
I think they have been sent a copy. I had, we ain't got any feedback from them on that. All right, so I'll, I'll plan to attend the planning commission meeting Monday night, just to see if they have any questions about that proposed ordinance. Let's proceed on. The city of Vanna, there's. They adopted, they adopted the original model that we considered at the first. So their ordinance says sixty, I mean fifty decibels. But since you, since you asked it, Mr. Chairman, let me. Let me show you something else. They, the company, they submitted a site plan. Okay, this is Shallow Road over here, this is Highway forty-one. This is the old particle board plant that isn't there anymore. But the red area, that's the portion of the site that's outside the city limits. This, this is the portion of that property that is outside the city limits. This is the portion of that property that is located inside the city limits. And if I'm not mistaken, some of this up here gets, can be kind of wet area there, so. But I said, the only buildings that are still remain there, this is the old guard shack at the main entrance. There's a metal, large metal building and a smaller metal building, but all these other buildings are no longer there. This is where the, all right, this is the guard shack off of Roseburg Road. This is where the Georgia Power Substation is. And on the plans that the, the officials gave Glenn last week, they're proposing in this area right here to install eight of those modular units.
Right by the road?
Well, well, this is a road there on the, on the north side of the substation, which makes kind of sense that way, they ain't got far to run electricity. Look, I'm about eight of those modular units there is phase one. That would require roughly eight megawatts of electricity. Supposedly, this is a twenty-five megawatt substation. And they've been, they told Glenn, phase two would be an additional sixteen units of those, of those modular units. And hold on a second, I need to have this prepared for y'all, but I. Yeah, so this is their plans they submitted, this is the entrance, that's the guard shack, concrete parking area, that's the Georgia Power Substation. That's the outline of the eight modular units that they're proposing. And the eight units will supposedly look something like that right there. These are inside a building, but they're, out there, they would not be inside a building, they'd be outside. The fans that are sucking the air through are on this side, they're sucking the air through. They're sucking the air through the other side of the building. The cool, the computer equipment is inside those. Where did I?
Did we ever finish discussion about the height? Eighteen feet?
And we, we are, or it says, basically says they can, they can have one, they cannot stack these units on top of each other.
But the fans, you know, we talked about the fans.
Well, we, right now, we're saying the newer modular units don't have the fans on top. So, if they want to do the old type modular event, they'll have to request a variance. And Kelly, I have to approve that. Well, my thought process is that keeps the noise lower, so hopefully it won't go out as far. I'll show y'all. I had some interesting information that I cannot remember off the top of my head.
It would bother, it doesn't really bother me, what concerned me. Now, the city of Vanna, you said that decimal was fifty?
Yes.
Okay, and how is it?
Sixty-five.
Okay, now you got the same company. They're gonna have two different numbers to deal with.
Unless they don't. Right now, all they're dealing with is us, cause they're building everything to be in the county, as long as they never put something in the city. We, we learned the fifty decibels was pretty much restricted amount.
Well, got to get
Vine didn't know that at the time of the past year, too.
No, then, and also, now keep in mind, if they locate inside the city, that means they're gonna also be paying city taxes. Which I would think would be an incentive to stay outside the city limits, but that's, that's people here over there.
Well, they can correct there. They can, they can change that with the variance also when they're
I wanted to put in perspective, eight megawatts, that, that don't, that don't register me what eight, how much eight megawatts is.
You had it broke down in another house.
I got it, and I'm trying to remember, where did I save, where did I save that at?
He definitely ate it.
What's the good meeting, Coach, on the thing?
The Sabbath?
Yeah, and how far can they be apart?
I don't know, Debbie, I'm sure, if that's a standard, like shipping containers forty foot long by nine feet wide.
I think eight feet wide, nine feet tall, I think, and I don't know either that. Okay.
He said with the distance between these one
Alright, one megawatt can supply enough electricity for six hundred and fifty homes. So, eight megawatts. Five thousand two hundred and eighty homes. So, that, those little eight modular units is gonna require not as much electricity as what, five thousand homes would require.
Or power than the rest of the county residential.
Be standing the power to them?
Uh, Georgia Power is. And
Sales types.
And then to put that in perspect, then there was some talk about that, that, that these folks are also, said they want to get into solar. Well, where's that at? I thought I had somewhere in here, I thought it said how many acres it would require for solar.
One Houston County claims to power fifteen hundred homes.
One percent, that's it in fact. That's all.
That's all.
How many?
And their billboard, it says that they, they, they're supplying power to fifteen hundred homes.
One megawatt of power supposedly just requires big five acres of solar panels, so eight megawatts would require forty acres to fu- to, to power those eight modular units.
Anyway, did we get the votes?
I took my question, I want, so raise me some votes. Anyway, alright. Whenever I walk around, I didn't feel like that goat she, whatever.
Goats be on top of them, I go. Alright, so everybody's okay with the, the order?
Says it things.
Okay. Golly, I hit it all right here and didn't, didn't even remember. Okay. Okay, item number seven, we already talked about that with Paul earlier. Uh, item number eight. Linda has posted the notice about voting for a county administrator and accepting resumes through the end of this month, correct? Okay, item number nine, just for information, the Dooley County High School Homecoming Parade is Thursday, September the eighteenth. That would normally be our second meeting in September, but we rescheduled our second meeting. So, do y'all want to participate in the parade? It's a yes or no question.
They have the bans this year?
Yes. We'll get y'all signed up to be in the parade. Item number ten, we're waiting on ten o'clock for item number ten to hold our public hearing. We'll skip over to some of the items I added. Number thirteen, the planning commission meets next Monday. They got two zoning requests to consider. Question number one, of Brian Boxley, request a variance for parcel one oh three dash four A. Currently zoned ag. The purpose of the variance is to allow a second residence on the property. The location is sixteen twenty-two Holt Walton Road. I don't know what reason for the second residence is, so I don't know, but that's, that's a variance. And y'all have given the, right? The planning commission the authority to approve or deny a variance request, so. And then I request number two, Anita Moreno, request a variance for parcel one oh one dash eight. Currently zoned agriculture. Purpose of the variance is to allow a reduced front yard setback from ninety feet to sixty-six feet from the center of the road. The purpose of the variance is to allow the residents to build an addition onto the front of their house. And it's located at ten sixteen Parker Road. Even with the, even with the variance, they're still gonna be sixty-six feet away from the center of the road. Again, that's a variance, and the planning commission has the authority to approve or deny those. And then the planning commission will also be reviewing the proposal on us on crypto credits. And we need to have an executive session for personnel matter. And then item fifteen, come up, this thing in the bills, you would, Bill Starr is our extension director. He's got something he wanted to present, y'all, he, he apologized for the late notice, but he can't help it, he just, he just received notice, I'm assuming you haven't been sitting on this
No, sir, I just found out about it yesterday, but, uh, good morning, everyone. I want to make y'all aware of something, I sent this to Mr. Sanders yesterday. You know, we, uh, we had a family consumer science agent here, uh, Patricia Lester, who in my opinion was doing an absolutely fantastic job. Well, it's been well over a year since she's left. Her position was unique, and, and I'll tell you what was unique about it. It was a shared position between Dooley County and Pulaski County, but the rest of the funding actually came from a CDC grant. Well, we haven't known if we were going to renew that grant or not, there, I found out yesterday that they are going to renew that grant. So, here's the ask, it's pretty much the way it was originally, there's a little bit of a change in the teachers' retirement system. It was a slight increase, so essentially, this is a ten thousand dollar salary ask. And then it ends up being around thirteen thousand dollars is what would be Dooley County's portion. This was previously funded for Patricia's position. Um, it's my hope that we can do this, this is not a decision y'all need to make today, I know y'all may need some discussion, and I know here we are nearing October for a new fiscal year, but I feel like the work that she was doing was valuable to the citizens of Dooley County, and I hope the next person that we get will be as good as Patricia was, cause I feel like it's a, a need in Dooley County, and I feel like those, there's some unmet needs that we could provide. And y'all think about this, discuss this, if you have questions, please feel free to call me or contact me, if I can't answer them, I'll, I'll find the person that can. Andrea Scarrow is our district director, she, um, I'd be happy for her to, you know, present to y'all if need be. But I feel like this is, is needed, I feel like it, she was providing some great services for the citizens of Dooley County, and I hope we can continue this. And I apologize for the short notice, but I just found out yesterday. So, um, it's been over a year since that position's been vacant, so I hope that we can, you know, move ahead and hopefully get somebody else in here. But, I'll, I'll leave that up to y'all as far as what discussion needs to happen. It, it doesn't need to be made today, I just want to make y'all aware.
Y'all have any questions, I know it's a short notice, but he's not asking for
Any, any talk with Pulaski, are they on board?
Yes, sir, as far as I know, that they are on board, that was what I was told, uh, yesterday. So, if everybody's in agreement, hopefully we can move forward with this, and, you know, move on this very quickly and get a new person in. And then, the county can start benefiting from the services this person can provide.
Is this still on the budget? We took it out?
And that's, and I knew that.
Yeah.
And I, and I apologize again, but I, I did not know.
Alright, so you hypothetically say first October, they say, yeah, we, we approve this. You say move quickly, but, you know, that's, that's a relative term, that's a relative term.
The wheels turn slowly.
I didn't understand that, so realistically, when would the, when, what, what's the earliest you see that position could be filled?
I would probably say January, at the very earliest.
And possibly later, but
Possibly later, you know, there's a small possibility it could be this year, but that's very doubtful. Realistically, I'd say January.
I know, that's just a guess, but
Yes.
I know he wasn't gonna, I knew it wouldn't happen the next, the next week or so.
No, no.
Cause y'all got a posted position advertised.
You do, and, and the wheels turn slowly sometimes, but once we start, I wish we get a good, good group of candidates and we narrow that down, I, I feel like that process will move very quickly. It's just getting through that process.
That number would be nine two hundred.
Alright, that's where I was headed with that. Any other questions for Bill at this time? Like I said, if y'all think of any, feel free to give him a call, he'd be glad, like he said, if he don't know the answer, he will find out the answer. Alright.
Thank y'all so much, I always appreciate the opportunity to visit with y'all. Y'all have questions, let me know.
Ben is finna pick up with peanuts and cotton?
Yeah, I've been blasting peanuts, my, my, I don't even have fingerprints right now, so, I've been doing so many, but I like doing it. And just so y'all know, there's a new pest in the state of Georgia called a cotton jacid. It's just one more thing that people have to worry about.
South Georgia, show up, Dawsonville area.
It, well, it's here.
It's here now?
Yes, sir, but it's not to the point where it's been where farmers have had to treat for it. But it is here, and this, this is a very damaging pest, i- it can destroy fields in seven to ten days if the populations get severe enough, it's significant. Fortunately, we're kind of getting towards the end of the season, hopefully we'll start defoliating cotton and, and those things, it won't matter. But it is a significant pest, and we're learning every day about what to do with it. But, but it is here, it's not at levels that we've had to treat for.
What, I mean
It's, it's called a cotton, it's called a cotton jacid, it's a, basically what they do is they feed on the leaves of the plant. And if they feed on enough of the leaves, you get significant defoliation. If you lose enough leaves, that plant cannot complete that growth process to mature that cotton out. You can have significant losses. Um, it multiplies exceptionally rapidly, it, um
Like a locust.
Like a locust, but it's a, it's a tiny, tiny little creature.
That picture looks big.
They're, they're probably a sixteenth of an inch.
Wow.
They're, they're very small.
So, they were in Seminole County, now this says Darty County, you said Dooley County, so they're
They are, they are in Dooley County. And it, it happened from Seminole to the time we found it, Dooley was essentially a month. They moved very rapidly.
They moving on the land, they moving with the equipment?
They're moving through winters from what I'm told. Uh, we're, we're still learning about this pest. It, it came from India, I don't have any clue how it ended up getting here. It's a real threat, it can be significant, but hopefully we can sort of dodge it for this year, I don't know where we're gonna be, I don't know how it overwinters, we don't know.
Yeah.
It, it's, it's brand new, it's just one more thing that farmers have had to deal with.
Worse than deer?
It's, it's worse than deer. And just so y'all know, we actually have a study here that's trying to facilitate a process to put an economic value on deer damage. In a field they've looked at here, they're studying, it's not only here, but several across the state, they're trying to develop, yet it causes X amount of dollars per acre if you have significant deer pressure, and it's significant.
You're still about hogs, and the last couple of years, I've heard more deer stories and loss and
I could show them to you. But they're trying to develop a way to quantify, to say that. If you have, because what, a lot of times what happens is they feed on it, instead of the plant growing up, it grows out. So, sometimes it makes the harvest almost impossible, so much to the ground. So, it, it's not only outside of the initial damage they do, it can be harvest issues.
Slow down, laser off.
Yes.
It killed my brother over
I don't even grow okra myself, I gave up, they eat my okra.
I looked at the flowers, pretty flowers, huh?
I don't, I don't even try.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank y'all, y'all have questions, y'all know how to get in touch with them.
Alright, we got a public hearing at ten. We need to have a executive session. You wanna try to do the executive session now, and then open the hearing and wait till after? I think so. You, I think we should. Need to request an executive session. That means the motion is going, executive.
There's a motion accepted. All in favor, by the show of hand. Now we are headed into the first, this is it.
This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you, Darrell. Well, Darrell, you can go if you, if you need to, if you, if you've got something else to do, you can, you can go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Anita. Motion, oh, no, 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 sorry, sorry. So, alright, we got a public hearing scheduled for today is the county commission have tentatively adopted the twenty twenty-five millage rate of seventeen point four five meals, which is the same millage rate as last year. Since this will require, will require an increase in property taxes by two point six two percent. We're required to hold three public hearings, we're conducting public hearing number one this morning. We're conducting public hearing number one this morning. We'll conduct public hearing number two this evening at six P M. And we'll conduct public hearing number three Friday, September nineteenth at ten A M. At this point in time, we'll open up the public hearing, is anybody here to comment on the proposed twenty twenty-five millage rate of seventeen point four five meals? Okay, we're there, we had scheduled a public hearing at ten o'clock, it is now ten ten. No more public is here. Chairman, I, I recommend we close the public hearings and no public is here. Let me make a note, the public hearing was conducted and officially closed at ten ten. Okay, do we want to go back into executive session or adjourn the meeting? That's the two options you have?
I think we need to go back into executive session, finish discussing what we, try to come to a some kind of agreement on what we want to do. President, I should, can we do that? Now, we may need to find a finish up here.
Let me ask a question before we go back. Uh, the position that the, uh, they had, does Bill start doing interviewing? Or does the, 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 together, or?
For the, for the family and consumer science agent.
Right.
He and his district supervisor would do the, because they will be considered an employee of the University of Georgia.
They do, they do half in Hockville and half in, in Dooley.
That's the current proposal, they would dedicate half their time to Dooley and half their time to Polaski. Now, they may not work twenty hours here and twenty hours in one week, they may, but overall, they should spend half their time in Dooley and half their time in Polaski.
She was the one, Ms. Lester was the one to help Joseph Willis with some of his grants and all he got and.
Oh, she, she set the bar mighty high, we'll be fortunate to get somebody that can do the job she was doing.
I'm just wondering how she would spend her time, you know, like here and.
Well, do we need to go back into executive session, you can just, Mr. Chairman?
I mean, I definitely am in it, that, that, I, I. We didn't read, we didn't read anything on it.
We, we suspended, so we need to go back in it, to conclude it.
Alright, need a motion. I'm going. I read.
Um, yeah, when we get to that point, we'll come and get you.
Okay.
That's the reg, we do that in regular session.
You know, she gotta present them to y'all first.
So I make a motion, we go to the, back in the executive session?
That's it. Okay, the motion in second, all in favor by the show of hand.
This conference will now be recorded.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes of executive session as read in executive session.
Let's see. Okay, there's the motion in second. All in favor by the show of hand.
Just a matter of information, we have a second, public hearing number two this evening at six P M.
Count me.
You want me to?
Denial, uh, Jackson's got a scrimmage game.
But we need three here, don't we?
But technically, y'all have got to be here, it don't look clinically if y'all are not here.
About policies.
Anyway. And then just just remember, our second meeting in September, we're rescheduling. It's gonna be that Friday.
Do we need to do our three together, or we need to do one at a time?
You can do our three together.
Okay. You know, we don't manage it now. Make a motion that we.
Oh, James Collier.
Hire.
Oh, wait a minute, James Brown.
James Brown.
Shane Collier. And Johnny Kendrick.
And Johnny Kendrick. For positions at the Public Works Department.
Ending.
Pending the criminal background checks are claimed.
I'm sorry, okay. There's been a motion in second. Do we have any further discussion or anything? If not, all in favor by the show of hand.
Alright, one question, when will they start work?
Um, not before the fifteenth.
Not before the fifteenth, though, September?
I have to get all this taken care of and, uh, then find probably when the new payroll will start.
You just gonna look at that.
It's just something, they can complain all they want to complain, but now they can really see what we've done.
Go, I'll tell you. Is that all of us speak?
So, yeah.
That's all, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
The motion in second.
Who's the guy you want for his name?
Shane, S A J E.